... because I'm calling the City Commission for the Wednesday, September 18th order. I'd like you all to join me in the flag salute if you will.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've got some proclamations and, well, actually, we have ceremonies today and actually presentations. We'll start with our Metro Councillor Carlotta Colette, who does a great job representing us to the regional government, and we see her more frequently than I think we've ever seen any other Metro councillor.
Well, you know, my husband's looking for property down here since I'm down here so often. He says, "We may as well just move there."
Very good.
We've got a mill site.
Next year, there will be a Victorian house on the market.
You're looking for low maintenance here. So let me bring you up to date on some of what's happening, and some of this you already know because you're the recipient of some of it. This one, for example, the Community Development and Planning Grants. I just, you know, we started out this year thinking we were going to have about $3.2 million to award. The economy's picking up, which means that the building industry's picking up, which means that we were able to award more, in this case, $4.2 million. And of that, Oregon City, for your Willamette Falls Legacy Project, got the $300,000. I know you had applied for $400,000. You actually did get $400,000. We made up the other $100,000, I think out of Metro's general fund, but I'm not looking too closely where exactly it came from. I know it's all on the up and up, but we really felt that it was important that even though the committee didn't recommend the full 400, we thought it was important enough that this project should have that full 400. So we found the money for you.
And we appreciate it.
And these are the other awards in District Two. I'm always very excited when I'm able to bring home some of the bacon to the community, and these are projects that are all really great. I think especially here is the West Lynn-Arch Bridge-Bolton Neighborhood Grant. This one was one there. West Lynn doesn't apply for this very, this kind of grant very often. In fact, this is the first time they've applied for something like this. And the committee that picks the, or makes the recommendations, thought that that was probably the best project they'd seen, and they loved the proposal, which made West Lynn very excited and very proud. So, and it's the complement to what you're doing here. It's the other side of the river. It really helps us look at this whole area as an opportunity that we can work on together. There's a couple of other, I think the Clackamas County Strategically Significant Employment Lands Project. If you haven't seen the website, Clackamas County's Business and Economic Development website, this is a really exciting project. They're doing some great work at the county, and we should be really proud of them. I'm very proud that we can partner with them on this particular project. The Regional Transportation Plan, I think some of you know, we do this every four years. This is all, it's a federally mandated planning process for all metropolitan areas in the United States. And the intention is really that we coordinate transportation planning and development so that we protect air quality. That was the original concept, was if you're, if you're not thinking about the consequences of building roads and you're not integrating strategies, you could be really destroying the air quality. So we do a 20-year plan every four years. I just forwarded to John Lewis this information about the project solicitation for 2013. There's some workshop next week that will help the, our communities learn how to apply to be, have their projects included in the RTP. We'll release that for public comment in the spring, and we have to adopt it. The drop dead date is, it has to be in the Fed's hands. It's actually July, but by September 2014, we have to have done all of the air quality compliance analysis, or the federal dollars for transportation cannot be spent in the region. So this is a real fixed deadline. The Feds apply the deadline. We need it. And so that's one of the things that our staff at Metro does, to just make sure that we are compliant with these federal requirements. This year, we don't have to do quite as, as large a regional transportation plan. The last one in 2009 was huge. It, we basically rethought the whole approach to, to transportation planning. This time around, we are integrating two major new focuses. The Regional Safety Plan that Metro developed with the Federal Highways Administration and the active, Regional Active Transportation Plan that integrates all of the bicycle, pedestrian transit access projects in the region. And here's a little bit more information about that. It's, as I said, it integrates the plans that we have in each of our communities. Our staff worked with your staff and staff all around the region to identify what are the most important corridors for bicycle, pedestrian access to transit, and then we integrated it all into a regional strategy. The JPACT unanimously approved releasing that for public comment, and I just need to be clear, we're not, we didn't adopt it. We just released it for public comment to make sure that we can have a big public engagement before we formally adopt it next year as part of the regional transportation plan update. Regional Flexible Funds, this is the money that's allocated, the federal dollars that come through Metro for the region. I think you're all probably too familiar with it. This is the 2016, 2018 federal dollars.
Very flexible.
Yes.
I've heard of it before, yeah.
Thirty-four projects were submitted by the counties in Portland, and then we will be approving those projects in October, and I'm glad to say I will not be at that meeting. I won't be on vacation. I've turned that over to my Vice Chair of JPACT. And here are the projects again, you know all too well. I think Oregon City had a really good project. You got aced out by three other projects. I think they're all good projects. I think, you know, this may not have been the outcome that, that you would have preferred or even that I would have preferred, but I think it's an okay outcome. I mean, I think these are good projects. It will be money well spent. And these, they are sidewalks on Jennings Avenue in unincorporated Clackamas County. The Trolley Trail Historic Bridge does really help Oregon City. That's the old UP, the Union Pacific Trolley Trail Bridge that we were, that UP was considering tearing down, and we met with them and said, "Would you consider keeping it and maybe giving it to Gladstone as a bike pad bridge?" And they said, "Yeah, you know, we have no vested interest in tearing it down." And then I said, "Well, how much do you think it would cost you if you had to tear it down?" And they said, "Well, we're working up a number now." And I said, "Well, would you consider giving that to Gladstone along with the bridge?" And so, that's where we are right now. They are thinking about, they probably said, "Well," I mean, they said probably not all of what it would cost to tear down, but we, you know, maybe we could give some as well. They would have had to spend it anyway.
Right.
And there's an example in Salem of a bridge, the community was offered a bridge for a dollar, and they said, "Well, hmm, you know, we'll take it off your hands for a dollar and a million dollars." And the, and it wasn't Union Pacific, but the railroad company agreed, and they have this really beautiful bike pad bridge now that leads to a park in Salem. And so we brought up that example to UP, and hopefully we'll, they'll come up with something. They, as I said, they're in negotiating mode. They're really working with us pretty well. So if all works, we will have a connection all the way from the Spring Water Corridor down the Trolley Trail, across that bridge into Oregon City and down to the Blue Heron Site, all walking or bicycling. So it's a, I think it's a great project, and everybody agreed it was a great project. And then the third project is the 129th Avenue Bike Lane and Sidewalk Project in Happy Valley. It's the other one that got funded, or is recommended for funding. I think you all know that we passed our natural areas levy in May. District Two did pass it. There was, I think, only a couple of parts of the region that did not, but I was very proud to say District Two passed it by, you know, a very tiny fraction of a percent, but you take wins when you can get them.
That's right.
And some of the first-year restoration projects in Clackamas County will be along Johnson Creek, along the Clackamas River Greenway, and then there are a number of smaller projects. In year two, a number of projects like the Kanema area, there'll be quite a bit of work done there, and other projects around Clackamas County. I think the biggie here, though, is that we'll be able to triple the Nature and Neighborhoods Restoration Grants that we've been doing. We've, we've been funding those, Metro's been funding those out of our general fund, and we've reduced it when we looked like we were going to be short on money and increased it at other times, and we were down to around $250,000 a year that we could give away in grants. Now, and next year, we think we'll have around $750,000 to a million to be able to give to Nature and Neighborhood Grants. So start, your wheels turn, and there's, there's money to be had. And maybe even more important is that we could now give long-term contracts to nurseries to grow the native plants we need to restore our native areas and natural areas. And a five-year contract to a nursery that's doing native plants, that's really significant. That's important. And it's important in Clackamas County because we do a lot of nursery business here. You're going to hear a full report on the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. You know all of this. I will say, in the last week, I think we've done three tours that I've been involved in with the Clackamas County Business Alliance, the Grand Rom Tribal Council, and the, today we had the West Side Economic Alliance, and I have yet to see a group go through and not be wowed by the site. So we are building champions region-wide and including the Grand Rom Tribal Council. I think they were very impressed. I had lunch with council members after, and there's, they're trying to figure out a way to, to become a partner in the project, you know, partner with a small P or a capital P, I'm not sure yet, but they definitely view this as, as an important project for the tribe. Nature and Neighborhoods, I mentioned earlier that we awarded $1.2 million in grants and projects in May, and I want to say that of those $1.2 million, almost $900,000, or maybe slightly more than $900,000, came to District Two. Again, it's not something that I get to pull my projects in and make sure they get funded, but we do have great projects in this district, and we have people who work well in partnerships with others, and that's how you get these things funded. One of the coolest ones here is the White Oak Savannah in West Lynn, a half a million dollars. They have to raise the other million. It's a matching grant, and that's not going to be easy to do. But I don't know, most of you might know of Roberta Schwartz, and if I had to bet on somebody raising a million-dollar matching money, I'd put my money on Roberta any day. She does not understand the word "no," so I'm, I'm pretty hopeful that they'll be able to secure this. And one of the neat things about it is that when you're up on that White Oak Savannah, you look across and you see the Kanema Bluffs, and you get to see this beautiful green riverway. So it's, it's all part of connecting our region visually and, and as habitat. The Community Investment Initiative is moving forward. In your packet, you have this sheet with the yellow on it, and I just wanted to point out on the back are the members of the Leadership Council. I'm really pleased that we could get the kind of commitment we have gotten from this level of leadership in our region. These are folks who are helping us look at how we can do public-private partnerships to build infrastructure. And we've had a couple examples in our region of doing this, but it hasn't really been institutionalized, and we're trying to figure out how to do that as, as a real team. The, probably the main movement going forward will be with this Regional Infrastructure Enterprise, which I hope we can come up with a better name for. It is right now a joint project of the Port of Portland Metro and Greater Portland Inc., which is the region-wide economic development entity. We will be identifying a couple of pilot projects to do over the next two years or so, just to get a sense of how, what are the needs, how do we work together as a team? Metro will partner with private developers and local governments in a couple downtown projects, and the port will partner on a couple of access to industrial land projects. And from that, we hope to be able to understand better how we can work together over the long Climate Smart Communities is moving forward as well, and I know when I've presented this around the community, around the region, people have had a hard time understanding, is this, what, exactly what are you doing, what, what's happening? So in your packet are eight case studies, and what we are trying to do is to talk about how each community might have a completely different approach to climate, to reaching the state climate goals. So for example, Wilsonville might take a transit approach, increasing their use of transit. Beaverton has a unique approach. The 82nd Avenue Corridor has its unique approach. There's eight different approaches in here, and each of them is looking at how they could meet state climate guidelines and, and do it in a way that is unique to that community. We are now looking at three scenarios that we evaluated over the summer, and it's kind of a combination of all of these plans. We'll have the results from that analysis this fall, and we'll start sharing that around, and next year, we have to, we have to select one set of projects that we'll go forward with to meet the state guidelines. Convention Center Hotel is big in the news these days, and I didn't see, I think Portland was going to vote this afternoon. Has anybody seen the vote yet?
I thought it was, maybe it was today. I thought it was tomorrow.
I think it was today. Well, it, well, I know the city and the county are both, have both moved their votes up. We expect this hotel to create 3,000 jobs in the region, attract five to 10 new conventions annually. We think it'll boost hotel business overall, because when we looked at what are our busiest months at the Convention Center, they happen to be during the rainy season. The rest of the hotels downtown, their busiest months are during the tourist season, which is not the rainy season. So we think if we can bring more people to, to our hotels and to the Convention Center in the rainy season, we'll actually be able to provide more, more clients for downtown hotels as well. They don't necessarily see it that way, but we've got some pretty strong analysis that says that. And we think that that will increase tourism-related spending by around $600 million. It will also generate $5.6 million in new state taxes and $4.7 million in new local tax revenues. But the most important thing, I think, is that it's a different formula than we looked at in the past. It's not really a taxpayer-subsidized project. 60% of the money to build this, this hotel will come from private investment, from Hyatt, from Mortensen Development. That's $119 million. $4 million is a loan from PDC that is designated for the, the Convention Center Urban Renewal District, so that's what that money was intended for. There's a $4 million grant in there from Metro, which is actually from our Convention Center Reserve Fund, so it's meant to help bolster the business at the Convention Center. And there's a $10 million grant in there from the state from, for, that's intended for economic development. So again, this is a fund from which it was intended. And then the $60 million in bonds that Metro will float will be repaid by revenues generated at the hotel, not property taxes, but hotel taxes generated at the hotel. So it's really, it really is a hotel that will pay for itself, and, and the more we look at the analysis of it, the more we think it's going to actually be a huge resource generator, revenue generator for our region. The updates from the zoo, we did have groundbreaking for the condor exhibit. For the first time in many generations, people will be able to see what folks south of us call California condors, what we're beginning to call Columbia condors, because they were also native to the Columbia River Gorge. We also broke ground for the elephant lands, which will expand our elephant habitat at the zoo from about an acre and a half to six and a half acres. This is really the biggest project in the 2008 bond package that we, we got voter approval for. But then the other big news is really that Nika Arlionis gave birth to three cubs and is a good mom. And that was, that was the worry, that she's a first-time mom. Lions are not always that friendly to their babies. And so we were, we were, all had our fingers crossed that she would be, that she'd take to being a mom, and she's doing great. If you haven't seen the videos online, it's really pretty cute. They get out of the box and wander around, and she goes and she picks them up in her teeth, and you kind of go, "Ugh." But she gently picks them up and puts them back in the box, which is about as good as you can expect from a lioness.
Yeah.
So we're very excited. And that's it for the Metro Region District Two update. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Comment, well, there, one question. I've heard something about money is going to Clackamas Community College. Do you want to mention that? I don't think that was in here.
Money going to Clackamas Community College from our, one of our grant programs?
Yes.
I, for the...
These are funds for the stormwater improvements.
Oh, right, right. And I don't know the exact dollars on that one, that one, that, but there is, there was money in there for Stormwater Project as part of the, the Environmental Learning Center up there, yeah.
And again, I think, I believe it's a two-to-one match, and so they'll be coming up with it, but part of that, of course, can be in-kind work, and maybe the city can work in certain ways with the stormwater program and so forth to help with that match. But they're very excited about that.
That's a, yeah, that's a really good program that, that tried to address the stormwater issues on campus.
And the Environmental Learning Center is going to be converted into a natural stormwater treatment process that will not only help the, the campus itself, but actually will serve areas of the Beaver Creek Road and the college camp, and the high school campus and so forth. So it is, it is semi-regional in that sense.
Yeah, yeah. It's a, it's a big, important project.
Yeah. The other thing I wanted to comment on was the fact that you are our first formal partner on the Willamette Legacy Project. The formal partners have committed to $100,000 a year for 10 years. I don't think that $300,000 that we got or $400,000 was...
It's not part of it.
It's not part of it. So in addition to that, there's a commitment on part of the Metro Regional Government for $100,000 over a 10-year period. Clackamas County joined us later in that partnership, and of course, the state has contributed $5 million to that project. These are the formal partners, and I think, I think Mr. Cockle's going to speak to that a little bit later, and so I won't say that much more about it. Anyway, I wanted to tell you what you presented there, which may become the reality, was the, the county's recommendations in terms of those projects. I'll be talking about our project a bit later, and we're still going to be involved in that particular process, and we've committed to it, and I'll be speaking to that when I give my report a little bit later.
Okay, great. I may not be able to stick around.
I don't, I don't expect you to.
But I'm sure I'll be hearing.
We, we had, we had a short agenda not too, it was a short agenda last time. We had a short, short agenda not too long ago, and I made the public comment that we were going to get out early, and it didn't work out that way. So I'm not making, I, I would not suggest you should remain for the, till the end in the reports. But as I say, you've been a tremendous partner and in every way, and we're really pleased for your representation.
Thank you. It's always my pleasure.
I have a question. In the Climate Smart Community Scenario Project, do, did the cities do their own studies or was that in partnership with Metro or?
Well, we, they submitted the information to us, and then we did the analysis about how each of them is actually, you know, on the back, it talks about the goals. Each one is kind of a little bit formulaic, but it's, we were able to use their, what they are doing to talk about how they're meeting the climate benefits and the various keys to success. So each one is a little bit different, and we partnered with them in doing the analysis. They just, we went to them and said, "What are you doing?" We knew obviously that some communities like Wilsonville are doing a lot with transit, so we asked them to help us put together these case studies. And they really are, I mean, it's, I think it's really exciting to see how each community has taken a different approach, and yet they all combine to help us reach these, these greenhouse gas targets. Had anybody said at the beginning that we could meet these targets, they're significant. I mean, these are huge reductions in, in tailpipe emissions. I would not necessarily have bet that we could do it, but now I think we can. We, we have a number of, of programs in place. We have to implement them. That's the challenge, is finding the continued investment. But as Tim Knapp, the mayor of Wilsonville, always says, you know, "Our communities are going to grow. We're going to be spending money to develop our communities. We could spend it in a sustainable way or in a non-sustainable way." The dollars are about the same either way, so you just be smart about it or not so smart about it. And from his perspective, and I think from ours, we're in a 21st century reality here, and how we invest our dollars for transportation, for local communities, for walkability, that really makes a huge difference in, in how our communities can meet their greenhouse gas targets, and how we as a region can meet it. Any other questions or comments?
No. It's very good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate you.
An appropriate follow-up to this, of course, is going to be Tony Conical, who will be, I think it's Tony Conical, will be addressing our Willamette Falls Legacy Project update. Are they probably actually Christina?
Nope. I'm going to go ahead and have this update provided by Ken Peary with Walker Macy and Kirsten Green from Kogan Owens Kogan are going to give up, they can give a little bit of an update and a check-in on where we're at in the process, what we've done to date and where we're heading.
Very good. Thank you. So we've got another show.
Yay. Yes.
Yes, we do.
Thank you, Mayor Neely and Commissioners. I'm Ken Peary. I'm the project manager for Walker Macy for the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. We're here to provide you with a quick update on the project. It goes without saying that we have really been enjoying our work for the past two months, so I just wanted to thank you again for the opportunity to work on this project. We really appreciate your support and enthusiasm, and while Councillor Colette is here as well, we also appreciate Metro's support as well as Clackamas County and the state. So I'm joined by Kirsten Green with Kogan Owens Kogan. They are leading the public engagement process, and so Kirsten's going to go through that in more detail after I speak. So the master planning team has spent, as I mentioned, a very enjoyable two months reviewing all the previous research and work on the site that has been prepared by a wide range of consultants and agencies. And all this previous work has been very informative and useful for our work. I'd also like to mention that city staff is incredibly knowledgeable about the site. Tony and Christina and Kelly have just been great resources, and we meet with them weekly, sometimes more than once a week, usually more than once a week. Our team has also walked the site extensively. I, I'm starting to lose track of how many times I've been on the site, which is a good thing to feel. And we've also been able to view the site from the water, from a boat, and for example, next week, we'll be, actually be touring the West Lynn side of the mill and viewing the ODFNW fish ladders, so we're looking forward to that. And we've also taken the time to look at the context and explore greater Oregon City, go to Kanema Bluffs Natural Area, just consider the, the overall context. So the goal with all this investigation was a thorough understanding of the physical, economic, community context, and that really creates a foundation for our work to create a beautiful plan for the site. So we've summarized our research in a lot of photos, maps and diagrams, and what we wanted to do is distill everything down to the essence, and that essence is collected in this set of Opportunities and Constraints diagrams in the booklet that I've provided. And we presented this work to our partners group on September 9th, and Mayor Neely and Councillor Polly were present for that. You saw a longer presentation. This is just an update, so we're not going to go through all of these diagrams and issues in detail, but we hope that you'll page through this document at your leisure, and please let us know if you have any further questions about it. The diagrams are organized. I'll just quickly page through on the screen for the benefit of people at home. They're organized according to the project's four core values, so we've got diagrams about public access, economic redevelopment, healthy habitat, and then finally historic and cultural interpretation. So just in the context of our work, a constraint is considered as a characteristic that presents a challenge to the site's rehabilitation and redevelopment. But it's worth pointing out that these challenges are not insurmountable. It just means that we need to take a little more care and be creative, which we like to think we're good at, to overcome some of these challenges and propose solutions to some of these constraints. The opportunities are obviously positive elements that we'd like to build on in the plan and really form, create those as the focal points for our continuing work. And, you know, according to your interpretation, a constraint could be seen as an opportunity and vice versa. So it's an interesting way of framing the research. So the next steps is that these diagrams really inform the subsequent work that we're going to do, which we've already started. We're now preparing initial scenarios, and we're going to be preparing, presenting those, that initial work on October 10th at the next community interactive event, and Kirsten will talk a little bit more about that. With the feedback from the public and from you and from the partner group, we're going to refine these scenarios into a set of plan alternatives, which will then get further refined with further input into a final plan, which we should have in December, a pretty good sense of what that plan's looking like, because that then needs to be folded into a formal land use application to the city, which you will review in the spring. So again, we've really been enjoying our work, and we So again, we've really been enjoying our work and we continue to do so and we're looking forward to the next four months. So Kirsten is going to describe the results of what has been, what we think, a very impressive public engagement strategy.
Thank you and thanks again for having us this evening and the opportunity, as I can said, to work on this initiative. I'm here on behalf of Kogan Owens Kogan. Again, my name is Kirsten Green and Ellen Wyoming is usually in front of you. She's on holiday today, so I'm here in her stead. So from just in two and a half months from July to September, under Christina and Kelly's leadership and with Walker Macy, we've engaged more than 2,500 regional residents in helping construct the vision. So we're in the vision phase of three phases of the project. We've presented to and discussed with 42 community organizations and groups ranging from neighborhood organizations here in Oregon City to business and civic groups. Those totaled more than 300 individuals in conversation. We held an interactive community event at the First City Festival this summer on July 27th that drew hundreds of comments and visionaries in a variety of methods on the site and downtown. Your elected leadership and regional leadership launched the event that evening. We've queried more than 2,100 regional respondents through Metro and the region's opt-in panel and through Oregon City's own online survey. You may have seen the robust website that your city is hosting with an active social media program including blog posts, Facebook and Twitter. As Councilor Colette mentioned, there's been an active program of community tours, 11 to-date media briefings and seven tabling events. So Christina and Kelly, Toni and the team have been very busy. This is in eight weeks. So key findings to date, we are concluding the vision phase, so I just thought I would touch on that according again to the four interrelated core values. Public access is a solid priority, probably no surprise to you that people want to get as close as they can to this incredible resource. Of more than 2,100 survey respondents, over 90% support public access on-site and say that that's a priority. Connectivity is also very important to resident respondents, including foot and bicycle traffic. All the access should support and complement redevelopment, so people are understanding that it's a package, that it's not, you know, simply just public access overall. So regarding economic redevelopment, more than three-quarters of survey respondents strongly support some redevelopment activity. Just a few details there that are a little bit interesting. 63% believe tourism is very important, 39% shopping and dining, 37% employment opportunities, 18% housing and 12% office space. And as Ken mentioned, we're entering the period of scenario development, so as you look at the end market analysis, so you look at the relative balance of these uses on the site, this public input is very informative. Taking advantage of the river's edge, obviously again, is very important and big box development is not popular. More than three-quarters of the respondents, again, assert healthy habitat. As a third interrelated core value, is a priority with a strong interest in water quality and stream flow, particularly regarding healthy fish and ecosystems for today and into the future. With respect to historic and cultural interpretation, the fourth interrelated core value, again, favored by more than three-quarters of the respondents, so overwhelming support for these core, interrelated core values, public access is sort of off the charts in terms of priority. People are interested in learning more about pre-European history, Native American communities with interest in history in the site, as well as our more recent history in Oregon City, which you know so well. So upcoming, some key dates for you and those that are listening, both of these will be at the Museum of the Oregon Territory. Please everyone, mark your calendars for October 10th. It'll be our second out of three interactive community events, more traditional indoor public event. So please come hear the more detail about the public findings to date and see the scenarios as they're emerging. I'm very excited to see them and so they're under construction currently, so we'll be seeing them December, excuse me, October 10th. Please join us from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then also a very important and special event on October 24th for Blue Heron employees. So particularly in the listening audience, if there's anyone that would like to attend, participate in that, again, evening event at the Museum of the Oregon Territory. All this information and more is on the website at www.rediscoverthefalls.com. Thanks and happy to answer any questions.
If I might, I'll be saying more about that, but we had our, we had our meeting with you all that involved the stakeholders and Carol Polly and I attended with the city along with some city staff that were there, but it was for the elected officials essentially. I regard it as a very positive meeting. It seemed like there was some very common visions on the critical things that were, that was there among all of our participants. I thought it was a well-organized discussion and I want to thank you for that. The, a lot of the tours that have been given have been for specific groups, but I think more are going to be available, as I understand, for the general public and it might be that Mr. Conklin might want to say something about that. My understanding is the intent is that the draft master plan will be submitted to the Planning Commission in April of next year. So we've, you know, we've got a process that's going on in a major way. I believe that we engaged you, but I don't know we had the funding when we initially engaged you and I believe it was the funding that.
And we're very grateful to Metro.
The Councilor, uh, Colette. We were pretty, we were pretty sure we were going to get it, but we had that commitment whether we're going to get those funds again. And again, thank you to Metro for that, for that grant. We really appreciate it. So we know we can go on with the master planning process. Former Mayor Alice Norris is in the audience and nine years ago, we had not updated our, at that point, we had not updated our comprehensive plan for 25 years, I believe it was, and under her leadership, we actually updated it. We knew that, well, we didn't know, but we knew the possibility would be that the then-current use of that, of that area may not be long-term and therefore we developed in that comprehensive plan, should the industrial use of that area disappear and remained, remained not there for another year, that it would go through a master planning process. That master planning process will determine the zoning. It may be a zoning that we have not ever had in the city. So it's very important that the public is engaged in this process. It's a major undertaking on our part, a long-term undertaking on our part. It's a challenging site, but the opportunities there are very clear. So I want to thank you, thank both of your organizations. I think you're doing a very great job.
We appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions?
Oh, thank you.
I think it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
With that, it comes that time of year, every year, where we read a proclamation. I don't think it gets edited too much, except some dates still change.
Has it already been a year?
It has.
It has. The proclamation, Oregon City West Lynn Rivalry Day. Whereas the cities of Oregon City and West Lynn wish to recognize the efforts of their citizens to create and maintain a positive family environment where children can learn the value of constructive competition. And whereas the cities of Oregon City and West Lynn value tradition and history as essential parts of their communities. And whereas Oregon City High School and West Lynn High School, formerly known as Union High School, have competed valiantly in the sports of football continuously since 1921. And whereas on October 10th, 2013, the teams representing these schools will renew their annual rivalry for the 93rd time. And whereas this is the longest continuously played rivalry west of the Mississippi and therefore worthy of recognition. And whereas the City Commission of Oregon City desires that the Pioneers again defeat the Lions and City Council of West Lynn desires that the Lions again defeat the Pioneers, I'm sure that's in opposite order on their proclamation. Now therefore, we, the City Commission of Oregon City and the City Council of West Lynn, hereby recognize and commend all citizens who have participated in this annual Gridiron Classic and support the efforts of the current teams by proclaiming October 10th, 2013 to the Oregon City West Lynn Rivalry Day. We further recommend in the spirit of the day that all citizens wear clothing of appropriate colors and refrain from crossing the river unless business requires until game time. And I'll be signing this along with Mayor John Koldash of the mayor of City of Oregon City. Now I do want to point out that we have, for many, many years, we've had more wins than losses in this effort. I hate to say this, but during however, the mayor-oriole period of Mayor Alice Norris, we were defeated every year. And I wasn't able to turn that around in the first year of my mayorship.
It takes a while to turn it around.
It took a while to turn it around. However, last year, we broke that, I think it was nine-year losing streak.
Ten. Yeah, it was ten, it was a decade.
Well, maybe, 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 maybe the previous year. Mayor lost one of those too.
One of the other signs.
But we are absolutely certain that Oregon City will triumph. And with that, we're going to go into citizen comments on items that are not currently on the agenda. Now I believe Alice Norris is on the list to speak. I'm going to ask her to come forward first because what she's talking about is relevant to, to some of the other discussions that preceded us and I'm sure she will come up and defend herself as well.
I'm sure she will.
No, I'm not going to talk about the football game. And I hope you're continuing the tradition of that the losing city gets to bungee jump off of the bridge.
The whole city?
Just the losing mayor. Honorable mayor and esteemed councilors, it's always a pleasure to appear before you and I again appreciate your tenacity and your dedication to the work. It's good work you do. I'm here with many hats on, I'll take them off quickly. First of all, as president of the Clackamas Repertory Theater, Thirty-Nine Steps, the last play is starting tomorrow night. So come and see that. My second hat is I'm on the naming committee for the bridge, the new bridge across the Willamette, the pedestrian bridge, light rail bridge, and you have names for it. It's not going to be named after some old dead white guy, so get those other names in. There'll be, there's a website on that. But the real reason I'm here is as the president of the Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition, which is sponsoring the Willamette Falls Festival, second annual, and you have a little brochure coming around. This is first weekend in October and City of Oregon City, of course, is a big sponsor of it. And the exciting thing about this year's is our theme is celebrating our industrial heritage and we want it really badly to be located near the Blue Heron Site and our big tent is actually on Blue Heron Site this year. So that's where the booths will be. And we have a couple of new things. We have partner events this year. We're kind of trying to grow sort of like the Rose Festival so that lock, so partners can come in under our umbrella, take advantage of the marketing and the visibility that we can do for them and they can retain their own identity. So on the West Lynn side, we have Lock Fest happening and on the West Lynn side, the Locks Museum will be open, the West Lynn Mill and PGE Powerhouse will be open for tours. They'll be able to take 10 people an hour and you should sign up on that side. On our side, I think this is so awesome, we are going to have three tours of the Blue Heron Site that the public may, first come first served on both sides of the river. They're all free. And the esteemed Toni Conklin, Christina Robertson Gardner will be our tour guide. So 60 people will be able to go on the West Lynn side and 60 additional on the Oregon City side at 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock and 11 o'clock on Saturday, October the 5th. So the website, www.willamettefallsfestival.com is the place to go for that. Nobody under 18 will be allowed on the Blue Heron Tour and the liability forms and everything on the website, because you do have to have that waiver in your hand before you go. But we're very, very excited about being able to feature both sides of the river and the industries that were so important to the development of the first capital of the Oregon Territory. So some of the other highlights that I want to, I want to point out, we're again going to have fireworks and they will be on a barge over, just where they were last year, over the, over the bridge. The dinner on Friday night, we hope the city will buy a table. I saw, yes. It is a dinner that's presented by the Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron with native foods.
Hi.
Hello. And the chef from Syracuse from Albany, whose name Matt, Matt Bennett. Chef Matt Bennett will be cooking that meal. And as we did last year, we have a beneficiary of charity and the charity this year is We Love Clean Rivers, which is an environmental group focused on the Willamette by getting people on the river so that they can love it and keep it clean and anyway, that's our benefit. So the proceeds of our festival after expenses will go to that, that charity this year. So and then we had, in the, in the tent, there will be a farmer's market, there will be all kinds of booths and music all through the day and into the evening. Then the, there, and a bunch of things the Clackamas Park, including a dedication of the art piece that was created last year out of found objects that came up out of the Willamette River. The Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron will be doing, presenting and all kinds of cultural demonstrations down there and a bunch of other art projects. The other exciting thing is the, Odette has consented to close the bridge again. A little bit of bother to the community, but it's going to be very exciting from nine, from 6:00 a.m. to noon on Sunday morning, the arch bridge will be closed again for pedestrian traffic and we're going to have a parade again of old cars and hopefully the bagpipers and opportunities for y'all to just have a fun time after you, of course, have had breakfast with the Cub Scout, Boy Scouts, with the Boy Scouts in, under, into the, under the tent, which I've always wanted to have a breakfast as part of the festival. So that, it'd be, and then probably the highlight of the whole weekend will be this particular presentation that's going to be at the Museum of the Oregon Territory at 11:30 a.m. on Saturday, where the founder of West Lynn, Robert Moore, is going to talk to his friend, the founder of Oregon City, Dr. John McLaughlin. And there will be three mayors actually involved in this presentation from 1857. So former, former mayor of West Lynn Larry McIntyre is Robert Moore, current mayor Doug Neely as John McLaughlin, and I will be moderating to make sure that they stay in character costume and don't get too windy. So we also will have a speaker about the locks and the Army Corps of Engineers. So there's just a bunch of things and I hope to see you all there for the weekend and to see you at the dinner particularly on Friday. So if you have no questions, why, y'all come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So does that mean I can't go on one of the tours?
No, you've already been.
Yeah.
Another West Lynn. With that, I'll go ahead and take the other comments or go onto off the screen here. And we have on the floor, we have Bill Daniels and James Nocidi. Would you both please come forward? If you could limit your comments to three minutes, appreciate it.
Bill Daniels, McLaughlin Neighborhood Association. In fact, I was going to give Nancy a copy of our minutes. We've been appointed to maybe, if we can, speak for the association, maybe have 10 minutes if that's possible, if we need that much time.
We're doing the two of you?
Yeah. And basically, to paraphrase the minutes of the meeting, that James and I were asked to come to the next city commission meeting and request that, an application that was submitted for the Heritage Grove up at the, in the Waterboard Park vicinity be moved forward to, for a vote, an up or down vote at the next city commission meeting. So that's what we're here tonight to ask you to entertain that, that idea. And I will give this to Nancy. Thank you.
Nancy, can I request being able to project the screen up to, I just want to call up the.
Do you have something?
No, I wanted to just project the code provision regarding Heritage Groves that I just passed down, so everybody can see it.
Where James starts, I was going to mention that this process, as you probably already realize if you have information in front of you, started nearly two years ago in November of 2011, when the application was submitted through a motion of, unanimous motion from the Neighborhood Association to establish a designation for the Heritage Grove up at the vicinity of, above the Public Works area and in Waterboard Park. There's three different lot numbers that were designated. And then there's a chronology of history that was. And then there's a chronology of history that was put together for your convenience to show where the process took from one step to another. And at this point in time, we'd like to bring it to a consideration for a vote perhaps on the next, next meeting at City Commission. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. I'm James Nacita, 302 Bluff Street, Oregon City. I asked Nancy to enter this document in the record, and I hope you'll have it for referral. And I just passed out some more information to you regarding the Heritage Grove ordinance in our city decision-making process. The main concern I have had about this is the disposition of this application at a work session last summer. If you'll turn to the underlined, underlined sections of what I just passed out, our code section, I've underlined the applicable review process for a Heritage Grove application It says, "The city commission shall review all heritage trees and grove recommendations at a public meeting." And in subsection three, it says, "After considering the staff report and any testimony by interested persons, the city commission shall vote on the recommendation." That didn't happen. This, this application was sidetracked at a work session last July, and I don't think it was done correctly or according to our code. And because that's never happened, the application's never been considered at the, a public meeting that the code requires, we're requesting that the citizens be granted that vote. I've also included sections 14 and 19 of the city charter regarding meetings, what a meeting is as opposed to a work session. And then in section 19, it indicates of our charter, it says that on matters before the commission, you have to have a vote. Then I've included an excerpt of your rules and procedures, which defines a meeting, which is a meeting where a vote is taken and a work session, which says no formal votes may be taken on work session items. So I'll leave it for others to explain what happened, but I don't think it was done in accordance with our code. Then what did happen at that work session is there was an effort made to send this back to staff to change and amend the, the entire Heritage Grove ordinance. And I've been following that and attending Natural Resources Committee meetings regularly, following that ordinance revision. And when this all began, I discovered and pointed out to the Natural Resources Commission a provision that I found very troubling, which is on the last page of this timeline document, which is a provision that includes a site and condition and criteria, the requirement that the subject property on which the tree or trees is located are not the subject of a submitted or approved land use application. Now, this, this Waterboard Park application for a Heritage Grove was in fact made on a property that was the subject of a land use application and approved land use application, namely for the Public Works expansion. So this seems manifestly to me like an effort to, after having not voted on the application as the commission was supposed to during a regularly scheduled public meeting, then changing the ordinance, which would have extinguished the application altogether. And that, to me, smells bad, frankly. And I also made a public records act to Nancy also and asked her to put that into the record because I would like, would actually like the commission to investigate and inquire as to whether that was a coordinated effort to basically extinguish this application without giving a fair vote according to the code. And I'll follow up on it. I hope the commission will as well. But in our opinion, the bottom line is the code requires a vote. We're requesting a vote. Simple as that.
Thank you.
Well, I think we can, it probably will take some time. Is there anybody else to speak to that particular issue? Because we have another person on, and I don't know offhand whether that person was going to speak to it or not. Who's the person that's on?
Gifford.
Were you going to speak to this issue? Okay. I'll give, first of all, Tony Conklin an opportunity to respond to what I think were accusations, or if the city manager wishes to. The, the two pieces of property, one's Waterboard Park and the other piece of property that's there and that has been discussed, and it's also property that's owned by Public Works. Let me make a comment that in terms of the Public Works expansion, the city commission has seen a design that has been put forward that actually made protections of lands that were being considered for any.
Actually included that in the package.
The other thing which I can comment on, that Public Works is actively seeking a different site for the Public Works, for the Public Works location. So I, I guess I would say right at the moment, unless I hear otherwise, that we haven't had presented to us at this time the revisions. We could probably take actions under the current code, but it, we're, we're in a situation where some of the areas of interest were areas that were not necessary trees. And I think the protection, protection of habitat should be dealt with really in a different ordinance rather than the heritage tree, which I don't, and I made this comment before, the heritage tree designation, I don't think is the best tool for protecting habitat. And I hope that the next commission that comes forward would actually look at that as one of the goals. We, the properties along Waterboard Park are not the only places where we have these issues. We've got city-owned land along the Clackamas River that is not even a park. Should be, but it's not. And I think that's important habitat as well. The area that's around Ladderet Park, not Ladderet Park, excuse me, Atkinson Park, is a forested area. And I think, I think that deserves some consideration for habitat protection as well as county lands on the north slope of Abernathy Creek adjacent to Atkinson Park. I think we've got a lot of things that I think that we ought to actually develop goals for and in terms of habitats we currently have in the city. I don't think this is the best mechanism of doing it personally. I don't know if any other person on the commission wants to speak to this or not.
Yeah, I do.
Sure.
I don't know how to do it. Hold on. Now I do.
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I disagree with this because this is the mechanism that we have right now. So we need to work within the framework of what we have, who knows how many years it'll take to develop something else that we can deal with these other habitat areas. I attended the McLaughlin Neighborhood Meeting and the National Resources Committee Meeting in the last couple of weeks dealing with this issue and can assure you that people in those, in the neighborhood and on the National Resources, Natural Resources Committee are all very concerned with not only the tree preservation, but the habitat. It's, it's something that we, we, it's a protection that we have to deal with these pieces of property at this point of time. If we continually put things off till the future until everything's perfect, we're not going to ever get there. And so we need to deal with these other parks or pieces of property as they come along. And if we have something developed at that point, fine, we'll deal with them under the, under those provisions. But I think we need to deal with what's been set before us. And I would, well, I'll let anyone else speak before I do a motion here.
Okay. I'd prefer to have a motion after we've had the rest of our public comments. So we'll, we'll probably have other people that are going to address it. It'd be possible to put forward that motion, but I do believe that if the protection's going to go to specifically parkland, that the Park and Recreation Committee should have an opportunity to see it. I would, I would value input from them.
That's not the process listed here, though, in our.
The Parks and Recreation Committee did review this application already, Mr. Mayor.
And they can, they can have the opportunity to speak to it at a public meeting. So what, the point is that I think that is appropriate. I think if it's on Public Works land, it's appropriate that the Public Works have the opportunity to speak to it. But you'll be free to put in a motion after we finish our, our public comment.
Mayor, may I, just as a point of order?
Yes.
Make a suggestion?
You're, everyone here is speaking about different parties or groups that might have an interest in, in commenting on any action you're contemplating on this, on this application. Might I suggest that since it's not an agenda item tonight?
Right.
That if the commission can reach a consensus that you want it to be an agenda item, well, you know, the process for getting things on the agenda is pretty open and straightforward. So any of you could follow that process, then we would put it on agenda, and then the regular notice could go out and everyone could participate who wishes to.
Lady Member on this subject?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Mom.
Thank you. And I just want to say that there are, it's an important ordinance. We need to give it thought. I personally don't think it needs to involve the Public Works site because we don't have a new site yet. And the commission did say that as soon as we had a new site for the Public Works Department, we would consider this for the Public Works site. But if you want to have it for Waterboard Park, then I would say pursue that personally. But I agree, staff has now had time to, to review. I don't know the impact of what if it does go to Public Works site? What does that mean for future development there? I don't know. I'd need to have a lot more discussion on this.
I've responded, Commissioner Mom, that's exactly what a regularly scheduled agenda item is for.
I would agree.
To allow you to get a scat, get a staff report and vote it yea or nay, up or down. The problem we're seeing here is this application was submitted nearly two years ago. The code says an applicant is entitled to a vote at a regular city commission meeting. And that's never happened. All we're asking for tonight is just a motion to schedule a date certain for a vote that the code requires. If you want to vote no at that meeting, when it's, I mean, we'll make our arguments, staff will make your arguments, opponents will make their arguments. But the code clearly states you have to have a vote on it. And we're asking, simply asking that the commission follow the code. Mayor, just for context, too, I do believe the Natural Resources Committee has been grappling with the issue and has even had some difficulty reaching a consensus on how to cope with it. So again, I don't necessarily believe you need a motion if you want this item on your agenda. There's a, we figured.
I move to put this on the agenda for the next commission meeting.
Next commission meeting, yes. I second that, yes.
We have a motion in a second. Wait for the motion, second. Normally, we don't do the motions during this period of time, but we have it here before us. Vote, please.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
And Mayor Neely?
Aye. I think it's, for one thing, it's appropriate to actually have this, since the submission was based upon these guidelines, criteria, and so forth, to have this discussion under the current codes and guidelines. Yeah. Okay?
Thank you all very much. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Gifford.
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. Just a couple of things. First of all, several weeks ago, I came to City Commission and pointed out the fact that there was a bush in front of our historic sign. I just want to thank very much the, the city for removing that bush so we can see that beautiful sign. Thanks very much. Secondly, during Councilor Colette's presentation, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned something about Clackamas County, I'm sorry, the Clackamas Community College. And I just noticed something in the paper today that they're going to be start, as soon as, they're going to be starting a free shuttle service.
To the Green Line.
Trimed is going to go from the Green Line to Clackamas Campus. And I was very impressed with that.
That's great.
Monday through Thursday and Friday mornings. It's going to be a free shuttle service. I think it's going to be very convenient for students up there at the college.
Is it just for students or?
No, apparently that's open to the public. And it's free.
Yeah.
So if you want to free ride up to Clackamas Town Center, hop on.
That's great.
Yeah, I think it's a really nice thing. And lastly, I just want to remind everyone that today is the 65th birthday of the United States Air Force, and very pleased to, to remember that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Since you were giving commendations to probably Public Works, I presume?
Oh, I don't want to give too much. That goes.
Well, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to give them, I'm going to give them the kudo, too. I had mentioned to John Lewis that I had a citizen commenting about the lack of a, of a duck walk crossing near, near Higgins where there's a pond. There was a duck walk crossing, two of them, going both directions, but one apparently disappeared. I mentioned this to John Lewis, and now the ducks are protected.
Did they walk in the right direction or the two?
I doubt.
I thought, I thought Mr. Lewis looked very attractive on television last night as well, on Channel 8 News.
And every other station.
Did he, did he look equally attractive on the other stations or you know?
I was trying to switch back before, you know, to each one. I think he was about the same.
Okay. His wife is more attractive than he is. Anyway. Bill, are you back?
I had a second comment I talked to Nancy about, and this is totally opposite of what I was here originally for.
You don't mean opposite, you mean different?
Different.
Okay.
And perhaps opposite. And it's in regards to the newspaper article in today's paper regarding the city looking at an acquisition possibly down the road of the building that's just adjacent to the elevator as one gets off the elevator. And I'm here to support that idea fully. Being a neighbor, probably the closest neighbor to that elevator, certainly there's been many opportunities for people, most tourists come through that elevator and usually are trying to find their way perhaps to Carnegie or to the McLaughlin House. But they certainly come out in that area as, as a perfect spot for our city to make a comfortable presentation to any tourists that are here, especially the idea of having perhaps restrooms there. There are no restrooms in that area. You have to go to the McLaughlin House or excuse, yes, or the, or the library perhaps to.
Your place.
Or my place, which has, which has, which has happened unfortunately. So I'm much in favor of pursuing that whole idea of, of having a presence there and perhaps the elevator, it could be a time lock mechanism to close it down at the night and those kind of ideas where, or maybe the elevator operator could do that at night or something. But I think if we are lucky enough to, to be able to reach a decision at some point to be able to purchase that facility, it's, it's a perfect spot for, for the city.
The city commission and the Urban Unital Commission gave some specific direction to our city manager. The opening baseline bid was more than we were going to make a bid on at this point. I think I can make that statement at this point since, since that process has been gone through. I don't know if anybody made a bid.
By the article, there was.
Yeah, so it, it may well be that we might, will become involved in that action, but not, not at that level.
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney.
I don't usually take exception with you, Mr. Mayor, but I would like to, with all due respect, see if I can get an amendment to that. Whereas, after having been beaten twice by Westland, I'd like to be included in that retroactively, if that's the word. We lost twice. It's a great, great rivalry, rivalry. I had the privilege of being thrown out of both ballgames.
You're wrong, are you? You go, Bob.
No, no, it wasn't thrown out, it was carried out. I got scratched, bitten in a, in a pileup. Somebody called me a bad name. And, but anyway.
Was it on your team or the other team that called you the bad name?
Both. So if you, if you, does this go to Westland? So if you, if you, does this go to Westland? Is it really? Well, anyway, I played ball just before dirt was invented. It's been a while, so I'm not going to dig myself. But if you'd amend, put a few amendments in there, just-
I'm going, I'm going to have to stay too. You're going to have to get the joint consent of Mayor Kovach on any amendments that come forward.
Well, I'll tell you, it was, it was a great, great rivalry. It just, it just, you know, and I can't say enough about it, so I won't say anymore. Okay, thank you.
I'm pretty sure you didn't play when Alice Norris was losing, did you?
I didn't see her in the stands.
This is, the citizen families are one of the reasons I'm not making predictions about how long meetings go anymore. Going on to our next agenda item, which is the adoption of the agenda. Is there anything to be pulled on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll proceed. General business, Resolution 1323 modifying a planning fee schedule to include additional fees in a many resolution 1019. In my understanding, this is not a revision of current fees. These are other items of other fees that we find that we're spending more time on and need to have covered. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor, thank you. Or it would be, for example, there are two fees, the public improvement modification and the planning commission parking adjustment, where new land use processes identified through the transportation system plan update that we just completed, and the changes to the municipal code that were adopted in order to implement that. We didn't have a process set up, so we created one as a result of that TSP update that we did. We additionally clarified, provided a reduced fee for when an applicant comes in and needs to do a transportation analysis letter, rather than a complete transportation impact and analysis. So an example of that would be you have an existing business, you're putting on a 500 square foot addition to it. Our, our, our transportation guidelines indicate when a transportation analysis is required, and it's when there's more than 20 trips being created going through a lighted intersection at the Amher Peak hour. A 500 square foot addition to an office building will not create that, so it doesn't trigger that full, big transportation impact analysis. But what we do need to look at is safety, site distance, but it's a much smaller review. So we created this transportation analysis letter, and so an applicant can submit that. We needed a fee that represented the amount of time to do that work, which is much less than reviewing a transportation impact analysis. Oregon City Municipal Code, Section 2-28-070E, we codified what the appeal for a historic review board decision was, and so in our code, it's codified as $50. For some reason, the appeal never made it on our planning fee summary, so we've just added it for clarification when folks come in to ask, how much is in a historic review board appeal? We have it on our fee schedule. We also have a situation where you can have what are called non-conforming legal reviews. So for example, sometimes when folks are buying a home, the lender will ask for a clarification from the city. Your property's owned R6, your lot's 5,000 square feet. They just want confirmation that it's a legal, non-conforming use. If it burns down, it can be rebuilt. It's a very simple review, provided the information's available. We did not have a mechanism to review those, and so we would, we review them essentially as a public records request. These are very simple to do. And the only other fee we had was the type 2, which is more involved with public notice, and that fee was $793. So it's appropriate that we charge our time on these, because they're relatively quick, usually a two-hour process to verify very simple, non-conforming questions. And then the last part is that we're required to, applicants are required to submit mailing labels when they do a land use application of everybody within 300 feet, so that we can mail them the notice. We provide that with our GIS system, and we've been charging folks. We just did not have it on our fee schedule, so we've added it. It's essentially $15 for the time to create it, plus the materials. So those are the proposed and requested amendments to the planning fee schedule. Within the information, we also provided examples of when these new processes would be used, and how we came up with the fee, which is a breakdown of staff time, engineering time, and attorney time where appropriate. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is that Commissioner Polly?
Yes, I'm on your screen now.
Okay.
Is this in response to making the processes easier, more streamlined, and?
The, the, the public improvement modification and the planning commission adjustments that were identified through the TSP. The planning improvement modification was in response to, right now, if you have an existing lot of record in the city, and you come in and it's vacant, you want to build a home, you build the house. What the public improvement modification does, it says that now, associated with that home improvement, there is going to be some type of a public improvement, whether that be a sidewalk or a curb. And so we needed a process to do that, because we didn't have one, because we never did it historically. So that needed to be created. For parking adjustments, once again, the only avenue we had was a variance, if you wanted to exceed or reduce your parking above or below the minimum or the maximum that's identified. So we, we created an alternative that's tailored more specifically to the question of parking, rather than your more general variance. Variances are usually very difficult to justify, whereas parking, because of the abilities for how the uses are, sharing, you know, they're different, it's different than a variance. So we created that process, which did not exist anymore. So we're hoping that that will actually provide an easier avenue to do some more creative parking. The transportation analysis letter is, is a reduced fee that's based on time worked, that really, that represents the less involved process. We're not doing this larger transportation impact analysis that looks at multiple intersections. It's very site-specific. So that's a fee. It's not necessarily going to make it quicker, it's going to make it less expensive. Historic reviewed appeal is just administrative, that's been codified. And then the type 1, non-conforming use review, once again, it's codifying a practice that we were, that we'd implemented, because you couldn't justify charging $793 to write someone a very brief memo.
Okay, thank you.
See anybody else? I've got a couple of things. The neighborhood, when neighborhood associations make appeals, they're, they don't pay fees, and is that true for the historic review board as well? I think it's true of the planning commission.
Right, no, yes, that is, that is correct. If the neighborhood association in a duly noticed meeting supports an appeal, and they provide us those minutes, the appeal is, is, the neighborhood association is not charged the cost of processing that appeal, whether it be from planning commission, myself, the community development director, or the historic review board.
Okay, I want to clarify that. The other piece is on labels. Who pays for the postage?
That's incorporated in the land use submittal.
Okay.
So if someone submits for a subdivision, that's, that's-
So it's part, it's part of that.
Correct. So I do.
Okay. I was just wondering why the labels got called up separately, other than you had to set something up specifically, I guess.
People would ask what it costs, or they'd go to our website. It's just, it's just easier to have the information in one spot.
Any other comments? If not, entertain a motion?
Move to approve 13-511, Resolution Number 13-23, modifying the planning fee schedule to include additional fees, and demanding Resolution Number 10-19.
Second?
I will second that.
A move by Commissioner Mom, seconded by Commissioner Polly. The vote, please.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
With that, we'll go on to our next item on the agenda, which is the, gotta check it out here. The, here we are, Resolution 1325, requesting the transfer from Clackamas County to Oregon City, a portion of Thayer Road, and all of Thayer Road.
Thayer Court.
Thayer Court, Thayer Court, thank you. I'll come back to it, Falcon Drive and Connie Court. This is staff, Public Works, I presume?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for your time. Mayor, just read the resolution, what we're asking you for. Suppose this could have been a consent agenda item. It's pretty standard, and we've already considered this in an early agreement that kind of stepped this through the process, but we're trying to confirm this transfer through this resolution. I, I think the other reason for putting it on the general business item, as a general business item, was to just point out some of our justification, and point out ongoing efforts to kind of continue cooperating with the county on some of these jurisdictional cleanups. These properties have been, a couple of them, Falcon Drive and Connie Court, have been well inside the city limits for a long time. The property owners pay, pay the maintenance utility fee, and we tend to talk to them a fair amount about their frustrations with road maintenance, so this was a way to clean that up. We also had some jurisdictional challenges with Thayer Road and some of the subdivision work that's going on out there with two jurisdictions overseeing that, and a fair amount of frustration on the developer's part with that. So this, this resolution really just is consistent with our urban, our UGMA, Urban Growth Management Agreement, to some degree. The agreement suggests that the county would either pay us or provide a two-inch overlay, and in this case, couldn't get to that point with the county, especially on Thayer, where there was an existing development that we kind of needed to match. And the other streets were curbed, had curbs and gutters, so we, to just add a two-inch overlay wouldn't really work on those streets. So we agreed to some more minor maintenance. They actually put a chip seal on it, and then a fog seal over that. So that's what we agreed to in the last agreement, and they've completed the work, and now we're moving on. So, any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I'll ask a question. I was always under the pressure that we could also get the amount of money that corresponded to a two-inch, a two-inch overlay. Is that no longer the case?
No, that's still the case. We haven't been successful at doing that. The county is generally not, has not been willing to put out the money versus doing the work. They'd much rather do the work when they can. So in this case, the agreement was that we would still go ahead and take those over, even if they didn't pay us, for the difference between the minor work and the overlay.
I'll ask the question. Is the amount of work they're doing the equivalent of the amount of money we could have gotten for a two-inch overlay?
No.
That's unfortunate. I mean, it used to work pretty well.
Yeah, we, I would say we really, in many years, haven't been successful with the county on that issue, and we continue to press on that issue. So I think that these roads, for me, were longstanding out roads that were kind of needing to be included. I won't say we'll make the same deal with, with the county, you know, for the next transfer, but that's the deal that we got on this one. This one's been in the works for a couple of years. I kind of got involved in it pretty late, but at that point, those, those-
We've been delayed on a lot of the transfers of roads, is that not correct?
That's correct.
Right. I think this would be a time to put on our list for discussion. Chair Ludlow has been meeting with us, and it's been very good that, I don't know if that's occurred on a regular basis, maybe this is one of the things that we need to put on our list for discussion.
I think that's a great idea, and I also want to point out that I, and here it seems that Public Works has a reason to want these roads in for our maintenance, just to serve our citizens, but I think we, as a community, are better served if we, this is the rare exception, that we don't take in these roads, if they haven't been built, updated to our standards, or the county hasn't paid, because not doing maintenance for a long enough period means that, I guess maybe that was a strategy, but you know, it's, it's, the mayor's and I are constantly reminding our county friends that all of our residents are county taxpayers as well, and so we kind of expect that least, that basic service level from them. So we'll start putting that on our agenda, Mayor, and with our discussion.
Then I won't vote no on it. I mean, it's unfortunate. In the earlier days, and it was in a period of time when we were actually rapid expansion in the city, 5% growth rate, this was not an issue. And apparently, it has become one in recent years. Somehow, we've got to correct that relationship.
I think it was dramatic change when they lost a lot of their timber sales, and I'm not sure the status of that, but that was a lion's share of their road maintenance funding. So whether that's a good excuse or not, I hear it pretty regularly.
Yeah. Okay, do I, any other comments? Otherwise, we hear a motion.
I, I move to, you know what I do. I make a movement that we consider 13-433, Resolution Number 1325, requesting the transfer of Clackamas, from Clackamas County to Oregon City, a portion of Thayer Road, and all of Thayer Court, Falcon Drive, and Connie Court.
Second.
Motion made by Commission President Roth, and seconded by Commissioner Smith. Vote, please.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. With that, we get to go on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second?
Second, oh, I'm sorry.
Motion made by, we have it in the order of Commissioner Mom, and seconded by Commissioner Polly. Vote, please.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mom?
Aye.
Commissioner Roth?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Neely?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. With that, we go on, I believe, to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a number of things to report this evening, and a couple of handouts for you. And don't be intimidated by some of the handouts, because they're about our emergency operations plan, and we recently have had some new staff come on board with the city and tried to renew our focus on emergency preparedness. On October 17th, at 10:17 a.m., there's going to be an event called the Great Shake. I see Commissioner Roth smiling, so I think this is a daily thing for her.
Yes, it is.
Probably.
I practice dropping and holding every day.
Yeah, we have one more, yes, we do. And these handouts, I mean, it's a frequent question, I know, when we do council orientation for new elected officials, you get a tutorial on what to do in the event of an emergency, and this kind of is a short, the plan is actually, you know, 10 times the size of this document I'm handing out to you. This is just sort of the summary about what your roles and responsibilities are in the event of a natural disaster. The Great Shake that's taking place 1017 is much like the earthquake drill, Mayor, that you will recall you and I participated in here at City Hall.
Yes, somebody did participate, took pictures of you and I under the desk.
Someone did, did do that, yes. But anyway, this is what the posters look like. You'll probably see these on our website as well, and we'll be participating in that. And also, I just want to compliment Public Works, because they have really taken a much more interested role in this, as, of course, our police department has always done that in cooperation with Clackamas Fire. And so I think we're going to be better prepared when, when the big one hits. We also are going to be doing a sample emergency management declaration at the October 16th city commission meeting, and for that, we'll prepare an emergency simulation of a declaration that you would adopt in the event of emergency. And of course, those almost always come after the emergency occurs. So that, that's just some part of our rehearsal, because we would want to try to make it as realistic as we can. And then I think John Lewis is going to give us a couple of updates on 99E, and we also have had other complaints this month about the Dutch Brothers situation down here at the bottom of the hill, and the backups from some residents recently, and someone submitted something to, in writing to me, and I want John to talk about that a little bit as well.
Thank you again for taking the time to listen to a couple of pieces of information. So on your screen, I'm just, I've got a couple of PDF files I wanted to show you. This is associated with the McLaughlin, well, let me start by mentioning the, on September 25th, here at City Hall, at 5:30 to 7, we'll be having yet another public open house for the McLaughlin Boulevard project, so Eric Worgren's working hard on that. And we'll have display boards and update the schedule, in fact, boards, landscape design board, open house that'll provide as much information that we have on that. That project's essentially- That project's essentially designed and complete and we're on schedule for bidding in November, so.
What was the date on that again?
The date is September twenty-fifth.
At the time?
At five thirty to seven.
Thank you.
The Wednesday. So, that's a non-City Commission meeting Wednesday.
This comes back to us, is that correct?
Next Wednesday.
Yes.
Here.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry?
That comes back to us then.
It comes back to you. There will be, there'll be a bid opening and we'll have to make a decision on the bids.
But does it come back to us before we go through the bidding process?
Well, I'm not sure of that. There'll be opportunity to comment. Is that, is that what you're asking for? I, I'm not sure that we're...
I'm asking for to actually have the design come before the commission prior to opening it up to bidding process. We had certain recommendations that were actually made at the commission level and I just want to make sure that those, those comments are, have been addressed one way or another. I mean, if you didn't address them for a specific reason, then that's fine too, but I think we need to have that come back before the City Commission prior to it being submitted.
So Nancy, well, you'll note that, right? We can do that even at the next meeting?
Um, yes.
So, so that's the update on the, on the open house. The other thing that I wanted to just talk about was a little bit of, kind of a special need that we have. So, one of the challenges to this project is we're working in a flood plain and with some of the sidewalk and widening that happens along there to accommodate that sidewalk, we need to, we need to add some fill. And so, to balance that cut and fill, we're wanting to utilize this lot that shows up on the property and I'm not, I'll show you in another slide, we're not talking a big old gaping hole. We're talking about, if you're familiar with that lot, there's, it kind of grades up gently and so the next picture I'll show you will, will better depict kind of what we're, what we're thinking. So, if you look at this area here, we're talking about basically grading out some of that area, taking out a few yards, I should know the number of yards, eight hundred and ten cubic yards, which will essentially flatten that out and carry that parking area a little bit further out. And we'll also be using this area and probably this parcel for construction staging during the construction. So, those are important pieces of information. We just wanted to run that by you so you had that information. If there were some concerns, then we could address those right now as opposed to later.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What is this balancing? Where's the fill coming?
The fill is going to be placed kind of along the shoulders, on, well, not shoulders, there, the steeper slopes. If you remember, there's some, there's some walls along there that we're having to construct to kind of get the sidewalk width and so that's the fill that we'll be adding.
Thank you.
That's really all I needed to talk about with that one and I'm not hearing any problems associated with that. We'll, we'll make it look as good as new when we're all said and done. Let's see if I can get to here. Yeah, the, Mr. Fraser mentioned Dutch Brothers and I just wanted to mention that we've had some recent considerations and we've, with this Tenth Street maneuver that happens pretty regularly. So, if you're headed essentially south or up the hill on Tenth Street, often you'll see vehicles that'll want to make that left turn into Dutch Brothers. And in two thousand nine Nancy had a engineering study that was, that wasn't completed, it was, it was initiated, it had recommendations for some things that could happen onsite and some things that could happen offsite. We didn't pursue all of those. We, the property owner, we worked with him a little bit on some restriping configuration. Other things that happened back in that timeframe was we worked with ODOT Rail to put in the signalization there as you come down the hill. So, if vehicles are backed up too far on Tenth Street, the, the signals come on to kind of say, "Don't stop on the tracks." Those were some things that we did. But we still get a bunch of complaints about this driveway and I'd like, what I'd like to do is, I wanted to get kind of a nod of approval from the City Commission that if we completed that engineering study and did a re, re kind of look, a tune-up if you will of that engineering study, got it finalized, we used Kittleson and Associates at the time to do that, finalize that study, make sure we've got a recommendation, make sure we're working with that property owner to the degree he's willing to work with us. My sense is the recommendation's going to be for some kind of a harder pylon or median that would essentially be along the center stripe here that would prohibit vehicles from making that turn. And that kind of a change, you know, is, I think is going to be well received by the railroad for one. And I, I think with, without that kind of a barrier, we're going to see a real accident at some point in time. We've had complaints, we've talked about it at our TAC and I understand at the Chiefs' Advisory Board that came up as well. There's people that we've heard from have concerns about the business, but they're also, they're more concerned about the traveling public. And from the review we've gotten from our attorney, we have the authority to place those kind of harder barriers that prevent that kind of movement. This property has two driveways that got an access off Main Street. There's things that they could do onsite that would help. So, again, we want to work with them as much as they're willing to work with us, but we think that we should complete that study and based on those recommendations, which I'm, I'm not, I'm not projecting what they do, but I, there's not many options there. Unfortunately, that piece of property is what it is and, you know, the, the biggest concern that I have is if we put some barrier like that, does that then just move the problem somewhere else to one of the other driveways? So, I really do want to work with the traffic engineer on figuring out whether that's the right solution or not, but there's not too many options just given the grades along there, the narrowness of that roadway. ODOT would love it if we, I mean, not ODOT, the rail would love it if we found a way to close it, you know, we know we don't want to do that. But, so anyway, I'm looking for, again, a kind of a nod of approval from you that's, that says, "Move forward, spend a little bit money, more money to get that engineering work done and then if we have a recommendation that includes a barrier, that we'll bring that back to you, but we'd like to not have wasted all that engineering funding."
Right.
And, and then find a decision that's contrary to that, find ourselves just, you know, because of, you know, the potential impact for that, for that property owner.
I think we all have observed the issue. You said, often I think it's usually that we have problems, right? I think about fifty percent of the time I see that light flashing.
I have a question. So, when you say working with a property owner and giving them options, is that just options in the street or is that recommendations about what they can do within their property as far as entrance and exit and where they have things configured?
There's not many options, there's not any options that I know of in the street. There's just not space for that, whether it be on Main Street or on Tenth. So, yeah, the, the options are really, you know, timing maybe, how we deal with that so that they have time to kind of make some adjustments onsite and, you know, doing whatever we can to maybe help them with those changes.
Thank you.
My recollection might be a little faulty. I believe we were actually at one point seeking some right of way on that property we're now to facilitate that.
Yes, there was, you're right. There was an idea to kind of develop more of a turn pocket if you will, but for those vehicles coming down the hill so that they could get off the road in case of an emergency and we weren't really able to secure that. We, we basically bolstered this piece of sidewalk so it would handle a vehicle so that, that then becomes the escape route if a vehicle were kind of stuck there.
The owner wasn't willing to go along with that.
At the time, that's how I remember that.
Yep.
Has anyone suggested that they build a twin across the street by that lot?
I think they offered it.
They wanted to.
They actually suggested it. I can't remember if that was before you came on, but they actually...
That was just recently, yeah. Not sure that would fix it.
It's like, sort of like the Twin Towers at Washoe.
We've got the twin Dutch Brothers.
Okay, well, that's...
Park your car and walk there and get a coffee. The line's shorter if you walk up to the window. Just get out of the street. I love Dutch Brothers, but I don't love waiting by cars that are parked in the middle of the street there.
All right, we will proceed on that. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Next, I want to ask Maureen Cole to just mention a little something about the library survey that's ongoing and some programming.
Good evening Commissioners. So, I just wanted to mention that the, the library survey about the interior of the library is going strong since our public meeting. We have about a hundred and fifty responses, which is pretty good. And today I met with the architects who are helping just with the programming part, the ones that did the imaging, and our consultants to talk about what that turns into, you know, how this information affects the program. And it's very exciting and I also met, had a little focus group meeting with the, some genealogists at the Museum of the Oregon Territory to get their input about maybe a special genealogy local history place inside the library. And I'll continue doing some focus group meetings, so that's going very, very well. And I wanted to make sure that you knew about a wonderful program that we're having tomorrow night at the library, which is, was instigated by none other than David Fraser, City Manager. We are having an amazing guitar player, Brooks Robertson, who also happens to be David's instructor. And he is an extremely talented, really, he's not, he's not a child prodigy anymore, but he was when he was a child. He's like one of these amazing people. So, I hope that you can come to the library tomorrow and then next...
What time?
At seven.
Okay.
Yep. And next week we're having an Oregon Humanities Conversation program, Lessons From Lincoln. And this is about bipartisanship, which might be a very interesting topic for you all.
You should invite Congress to that one.
You should, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Also, I want to have some more items here. We're taking the City of Westland Council and Mayor and their senior staff on a tour of Willamette Falls Legacy Project site Friday, this Friday morning. And I don't think they've been on the site. I think some of them have been on some of our other earlier tours, but I don't think they've ever been there as a group. And I'm pretty sure none of their senior staff have been there either, so that'll be good. Also, our own Scott Archer was elected as President of the Oregon Park and Recreation Association.
Congratulations.
And Scott just got back from the conference and while he was there, he also received an award that I want to share with the commission. This is what it looks like.
Nice.
And it is an award for the city's Kanema Children's Park.
Oh, nice.
And I want to thank Mr. Archer and his team, the design staff, or also the design consultants are listed on here, and the citizens of Kanema who were also very active in helping us with the design and implementation of the park. So, congratulations Oregon City and particularly Scott, you and your staff.
That was a challenging site.
That's great.
Let's see here, next, I have some, I was at the farmer's market today to visit with Jackie Hammond Williams and they're getting near the end of the Wednesday downtown market and while I was down there, it was just a sign of how engaged and energized the community is about Willamette Falls. They were in the process of making these buttons and I asked for five of them, one for each of you. And they have the little logo on the, on the front. We're probably going to get something a little nicer to, to put on there, but I thought it was just neat that they were making them and passing them out to people and so I think those are the first five that they actually made, so.
Wow.
Jackie's a big supporter of the project and of course she probably would like to know that there's space there somewhere for a market, which is among many of the comments that I've seen and I think it would be a delightful addition, particularly if you're going to have downtown housing.
Yeah.
You know, especially if it's walkable, somebody's, you got to have a place to buy groceries, so that would be a year-round kind of thing that might work. So, that's exciting. Let's see. And then, the work on the elevator is, have you noticed that things are starting to happen there?
Yes.
And one of the things that is happening is the lettering for the elevator is just about ready to go up, but we have to keep prepping the surface. I brought a sample. Are you ready to see this?
Nice.
Cool.
Here it is. Pass it around and, but we have to give it back to John Lewis tonight because he's going to...
Or it will be red.
He's gonna, yeah, he's going to use it.
This is located above my front door.
Oh, yeah. I saw your heating and cooling trucks this morning on the interstate.
Very cool.
And then last but not least, it's training time for me again, so I will be Saturday leaving for the annual International City Manager Conference and so I'll be going there Saturday and Tony Conkle will be acting City Manager on Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. I think that's all I have to report unless any staff have anything. Okay, we're good.
I have a question. When do you go to, isn't it Japan?
Yeah, that's the, that's the end of October.
Oh, okay.
And the lady that came and presented the Afghan here, she made one of those and it just got finished, I think yesterday.
Did she really?
She made one yesterday and I almost feel bad, the Afghan was about three hundred dollars and I think that breaks out to about two bucks an hour or something because she told us how many hours she had put into, into the Afghan. So, we will be taking that to the city officials, the Tadashina, and I will be presenting it on behalf of all of you.
Yes.
I'm going to ask the mayor if he will prepare a proclamation and a letter that goes with it and I'll be presenting it to their, to their city officials.
Wow, that was awesome.
We are paying her for the Afghan. We actually called and said, "What would you charge us to do it?" And I think she's underestimating her worth on, on the effort.
I agree.
But I also think she was so excited to do it because knowing that this is going to hang in a city, you know, eight thousand miles from here is pretty exciting for her and I think she was just delighted to be part of it and we were delighted as well. So, we're going to tell a little story, I'm going to share some information about her and who knows, they might order one with their city logo. Yeah, I just thought that was really creative and a good testament to the spirit of our residents.
David?
I was going to ask Commissioner Smith, if there's an anniversary of the sister city agreement that's...
I don't know when it is.
Special anniversary of the sister city agreement between us and Tadashina.
I don't know that date.
Date is when it's...
We need to find that out.
Mr. Archer also has an update he wants to share with us.
Just one quick kind of announcement reminder for the commission and for the community that might be listening, that National Day of Remembrance is a week from today, next Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, one PM at Mountain View Cemetery. It's a, it's a really wonderful event. We work in conjunction with the Parents of Murdered Children Organization and the, this year is particularly special in that they're going to unveil the completed memorial project that they've been working on with the city for a number of years. And if you haven't had a chance, even whether you're able to go to the event or not, I do encourage you to, and, and again, the community to come by and visit that memorial site. It is amazing. They, they did an incredible job with that.
And Mayor Neely, I think you and I have been there three years in a row. I'm going to be away during, during the event, but it's one of the most moving things, you know, as a former homicide detective, I, it just brings back a lot of memories and it's just such a, such a moving thing and it's actually really something nice to be part of, so I would encourage anyone who's watching to go. And that's the extent of my reports.
My understanding is the only such memorial in Pacific Northwest.
Yes.
That's correct.
And I was, I was pleased that the Medro Enhancement Grant Committee Board this last time actually gave the, I think, last amount of money they needed to complete the project. There have been a lot of donations from various groups and I was pleased that the city through that board was able to make a contribution to that project. With that, I guess it's in my ballpark. We've gone through a process. Commissioner Carlotta Colette presented the county's recommendations for traffic, transportation projects. Speaking into the mic. Transportation, thanks. Transportation projects that come from the funds, federal funds that are given, flexible funds for the county to make determinations. We submitted a project proposal for Malala from Beaver Creek to Highway two thirteen. The project was reviewed in terms of criteria that were set up for that particular project. The Trolley, the Trolley Bridge was a different, really fit a different criteria and everybody agreed that that should be funded. The other three were primarily roads and street projects and we either tied or exceeded the markings of each criteria for each of those categories. And we either tied or exceeded the markings of each criteria for each of those categories. The C-4 Clackamas County Coordinating Committee, was that?
Yes.
They unanimously, well, not unanimously, minus one vote, supported the two other projects that were up there. The basic argument that was being used was that, well, we've received a lot of federal grant funds in the past. This is a safety corridor. We, when we went through this, we found ourselves that we tied in the safety category on those categories. We did a bit more research. We find that we have over the last five years, maybe six years that we had, well, actually, we've had subsequent data too. But the data presented to them at that particular meeting was that our, the issue was to reduce vehicular accidents with pedestrians and bicyclists. That was the intent of the, these monies. We found that, it's hard to tease the, the projects apart where the accidents occur, but Chief, Chief Mann did so. And we found that over the, over the last 2010, 2011, when we had the reports, the more recent reports for that, that we had more pedestrian and bicycle accidents involving vehicles in that segment than Happy Valley, which was a winner in terms of the project, had in its whole city. We are going to pursue our case to the, into the next stages of the process. I'll be meeting with John Lewis and David Frazier to discuss the strategy. It goes through a technical advisory committee before it goes to the J-PAC, which is the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation. Is that, is that correct? They, they then make a recommendation to the Metro Council. We intend to be active in each of those stages. It is, I think, very difficult for the groups like J-PAC and the Metro Council to ignore the recommendations that come out from the county process, which involves all of the cities and all, and the county itself. But the point is, when the discussion occurred, an item came up that was not on the criteria, and that was a question of equity. Should we get money again after we've gotten money before? Well, it wasn't a criterion. It was, the rules were kind of being changed on us as the process went forward. The chair of the committee reminded me of Captain Barbosa. Remember, Captain Barbosa felt that the Pirate's Code was more a set of guidelines. Well, he didn't refer to the Pirate's Code, but he recommended the criteria that were set forward and the recommendations were more of a set of guidelines. So he probably watched that movie too. Anyway, we're going to go ahead and pursue this to, to the maximum extent. Not getting this, these are actually for funds for building, if I'm not mistaken, for 2015 and '16. Is that correct?
Sixteen.
Fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
Sixteen and seventeen. So we're talking, we're talking about a four-year period, and we're going to continuously have these vehicular accidents. We won't, and it comes, I think they come up every two years, right, these funds availability? Well, should we not succeed, we're going to come up again and make our application again, I'm sure, on this, this area that really finishes out the sidewalks in Malala. And, and make that argument again, but we're going through a four-year period when we're going to go ahead and see additional pedestrian, bicycle accidents that involve vehicles. We've averaged about four or five a year over that period of five years. One was a fatality. I think it was a person in a wheelchair, if I recall correctly.
Yes.
And we'll pursue the argument forward. I think it's, I think we have a case. I'm not sure, I'm not sure it's going to change the outcome. But I, if it doesn't, what I hope occurs is that the criteria will be laid out in a specific way that all the items that people want are on that criteria, and we know what the weighting of those are. The fact that everything else was ignored and the question of equity came up, I think, was, was unfortunate. It was pointed out by staff, if we knew we were going to be in this position, we wouldn't have committed the amount of staff time to preparing this particular proposal. It took a lot of staff time to do so. So we'll pursue that. With that, there's a few other things I'd like to talk about. I'll, I'll leave a lot of it to Carol Polly, but we did have a, we did have our meeting with Walker Mason and Kogan Owens and Kogan that our commissioner mentioned, where Carol and I were the representative, the elected representatives from the city. We also made a trip to the, to present our project to the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron. They're, they're very interested in the project. They were going to set up their own study session for that particular project and make a determination to what degree they want to be involved in the partnership. They came on a tour of the site last Friday. They're also very excited about that, and I thank them for accepting our invitation for coming to their site. That site was, of course, used for time immemorial. They visualized the possibility of the fishing platforms being out there as part of this, as part of this effort. And they were very, very, very excited about the tour that they had. So we're looking forward to them having definitely a level of partnership and maybe a, maybe a significant one to the level that Clackamas County and the metro regional government I did want to announce a couple of things. An announcement that we have, the League of Oregon Cities Conference is going on in Portland, Oregon, from the twenty-sixth to the twenty-eighth. Both Commissioner Mum and myself had, have gone ahead and registered for that, but I have some conflicting engagements during that period. Oregon City is going to get a safety award. It has gotten safety awards almost every year for several years, including awards that were the best safety project for cities of our size. So Public Works has done a tremendous job in this particular category. We're going to get another award. I will not be able to be there at that time, so I've requested, and I requested Betty Mum, Commissioner, normally the commission president would accept the award, but Betty Mum had registered, and so she'll be accepting the award in my stead. It's, it's a great honor, and it's, it's an indication of how great a job the Public Works Department is doing. We're coming towards the end of the year, and being at that point, we're going to have vacancies in, opening up in our various boards and commissions. We actually have four vacancies that are currently unfilled, two of them resulting from resignations. The Transportation Advisory Committee has, still has two vacancies. That has been, those vacancies have been open, I think, for this full year. I'm not quite sure why people aren't signing up for that committee, since so many of the complaints we have are transportation complaints. The Budget Committee has one current vacancy. We had a resignation there. The Natural Resource Committee has one vacancy. We had a resignation there. We will be coming into our next year with one opening on the Oregon Civic Improvement Trust, three openings on the Historic Review Board, two openings on the Library Board, one opening on the Metro Enhancement Committee, one opening on the Natural Resource Committee, three openings on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, one opening on the Planning Commission, three openings on the Transportation Advisory Committee, two openings on the Urban Renewal Commission. And of course, this is a decision, most of these I make decisions on. Of course, the Urban Renewal Commission is one that we will be making a decision on, and also figuring out the time, the time terms for those two positions, since we dropped down to two positions this year. And, and then two, two openings on the Urban Renewal Budget Committee as well. And those will be additional, additional openings to those that are on the Urban Renewal Commission, I believe, because we're required to have as many citizen members of the, of the Budget Committee that we do have commission members. These applications are available, well, in the rare least chambers, but also online. And the deadline to apply is October 21st. Announcements have gone in to all the officers on the CIC, which means the Neighborhood Associations. And I'll also be making announcements, announcement at the, at the Good Morning Oregon City, that's a Chambers event. I guess I'm going to take, since I introduced the Willamette Falls Heritage Project, do you want to step in on that particular one?
Sure. The, the meeting with the partners went very well. There were lots of good questions from the county and, and other partners as well. And it was great to get all those vetted in a setting with all of us in the same room. I think the questions are being, you know, answered very clearly, and the processes is really being understood well. Everybody's on the same page. And the four values are very much agreed upon. I think there's really getting to be a clear vision, and the public process, I think, is going very well. All the literature that I've seen and the website, and I encourage everybody to go to the website, the Willamette Falls Legacy Project website. It's a, it's a great resource of the process, explains the process, and the timeline, and also gives opportunity for participation. So I think it's going very well. That's good.
Well, Commissioner Mum, next, she'll report on a meeting of South Fork, which I had an unexcused absence for. My apologies.
Well, before I go there, I want to talk about what happened at the evening C-4 meeting, which I attended. And it was pretty interesting, because we had the county economic development presentation. They talked about the film media that we had presented here. They have been called by the governor's office to give input on how to do it for the whole state, to put this form together and stuff like that. They have, they received calls, they've had twenty-nine calls. So they get calls daily for commercials and movies and, I don't know, what else they do. But the other piece, and Eric Underwood might know about this, is the commercial site search tool. They gave, that is amazing. I mean, you can go in, and it's a database of all of the available properties. Yes?
I was going to bring that to a work session.
I would love to see, yeah.
Oh, it's amazing. It's great. It was great.
We were actually one of the first states to work with them on that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Cool.
And then, transportation funds are becoming less available, as we know. So everybody is kind of fighting with that to get money for their cities. So we are working still, moving forward on trying to come up with a funding mechanism for the county, Clackamas County, for transportation issues. And we've been working on this for almost two years, and we have come down to a couple of options. The vehicle registration fee as one option, and the gas tax as another option. So the county commission, they are looking at developing a district for their transportation, transportation needs in the county. So it'd be kind of like the library district. So that kind of is going to throw a wrench into it, because all of us have to come together as partners and support it, and so we'll see how that falls out. But South Fork Water Board, Commissioner Smith and I attended that. It was, I thought it was a pretty good meeting. We did get information about the PGE is being requested by the regulators to come up with ways to lower our electricity. So they have asked South Fork to draw the water before the peak hours, so the reservoirs full, and then during the peak hours, turn the plant off. I mean, not like make it be black, but turn the power off to the generators. And then, after the peak hours, turn it back on, and then South Fork will get money for that. So they're figuring, for the first year, they'll have, they'll receive around ten thousand dollars back from PGE. And then after that, they figure it'll go up to forty-four thousand dollars a year that PGE is going to pay them for reducing their energy. And so I have a little flyer here that talks about that. And I don't know if Commissioner Smith has anything else to add about that, but that's it for me.
The other discussion, the other discussion was about Clackamas River Water and the issues that we are going to be dealing with in the future from South Fork Water, which is that Clackamas River Water has agreements with Sunrise Water Authority, which we at some point believe is going to turn into a merger. Right now, the, each entity is its own thing, but that looks like it could be definitely changing. The reason that that's such an impact to the city is that South Fork Water obviously provides water for both Oregon City and West Lynn. In the case that there's any annexations, typically Clackamas River Water users switch over to South Fork, unless there's some instance where we can't provide water logistically in an easy way. Clackamas River Water sees that as the city encroaching into their district as we grow, which we would be. So by merging with Sunrise, which is a water authority, it does not allow, it would not allow South Fork, South Fork's boundary, boundary to expand as the city annexed. So it gives them the ability to put a solid boundary, really, and kind of keep Oregon City only providing water to what we currently do as annexations come forward. And that obviously is a huge concern for, for us. And so that's something that we've been discussing for an extreme length of time and probably will be for, for at least the near future. So that was the other, those were really the two discussions that we had. I attended three other tourism meetings. I'll mention those really quick. The first was Oregon City, well, I gotta, I always got to keep my names. Okay, so the first one is the Oregon City Heritage Coordinating Committee, which is a heritage committee that includes all the heritage sites in the city. And we do different events throughout the year. One of the events that that group has done, probably for the last fifteen or twenty years, is a, is an event that happens at the end of October, which is the Spirits of Historic Oregon City. It traditionally had been a bus tour, and now has, has evolved into a walking tour that is not a ghost tour. It is a living history tour that visits the heritage sites in the city. This year's sites are Atkinson Church, Barclay House, McLaughlin House, and the Stevens Crawford House. The Carnegie, there'll be music at the Carnegie Library, Marketplace at the Pioneer Center, and the Rose Farm is also hosting an event that will connect with this. So that is, this year's focus is good luck, bad luck, or no luck. So, um, that is, this year's focus is, uh, good luck, bad luck, or no luck at all, um, focusing on different stories from Oregon City's history that, uh, pertain to that theme. And, uh, we'll be doing guided tours, that's Saturday, October nineteenth, from six to nine o'clock. Uh, cost is twelve dollars per person, and there'll be tours leaving, uh, the Pioneer Center every fifteen minutes. So, that's a great event, if you haven't, uh, participated in that. The other, uh, meeting that I went to, uh, was one that I put together, actually, from a group of past volunteers and supporters of the Erma Tinger House. Um, I wanted to get a core group of, uh, citizens together that I know have spent the last twenty years advocating for the House, to start discussing, um, what their thoughts are on eventually proposing some sort of a friends group for the House. Um, and just a general discussion of what we would like to see happen to the House once the House is done, um, thinking about not only how the city would deal with finishing the House, um, interior, in, in, House's interior, but what the programming might be, and volunteers, et cetera. So, we were trying to have a, a discussion about that, and hopefully, at some point, um, bring something to the commission to, to discuss. But that's in just the beginning stages. Um, also attended Oregon City Tourism Commission meeting. Uh, that meeting was discussing, uh, the Tourism Action Plan, or TAP, which Oregon City has a tourism action plan that is updated every year, um, that calls out kind of what, it's, it's, it's similar to what we do for urban renewal, and we have a plan, and, and when the money comes to the TAP organization, we can say, "These are projects to support this plan." Things in Oregon City like, um, downtown, the, the Falls, all these kind of things that are all pretty much the similar themes in everything that we do. Um, so, this group is open to anyone. Um, it is, uh, it includes all the heritage sites as well, all the museums, um, business, uh, representatives, um, but it's, it's open to everyone, and it's not a commission that we ever sanctioned as, um, specific members. It was, it was, it was intentionally left open, and it's so anyone could attend. Um, last year, uh, we had, it was twenty thousand dollars we typically get from the county. Uh, that's from their room taxes that go to different communities. And, in our community last year, that money was used for advertising primarily, um, for Clackamas County Historical Society. Downtown, uh, used some of that funding to, um, advertise some of its, uh, summer events. Um, money went to, um, promoting the triathlon that took place this year, um, and also the Willamette Falls Festival for two thousand twelve, which is, was a big event for the kickoff of the bridge. There was also money spent to update the kiosk, um, at the Amtrak Station, and, um, we're trying to really fill that gap from what happens when someone gets off the train to finding anything else in this town.
Yeah.
Um, so that's one of the things we've been working on. That was two thousand twelve. Um, this process for two thousand thirteen just has gotten underway. Um, you can get, uh, information, anyone can propose a project, all those organizations, and that'll be open until, um, I think, October eleventh, and then, uh, we will have a meeting on October twenty-first, uh, twenty-first to review the projects. The great thing about this committee is everyone in the committee, um, you know, some of them are proposing projects, but none of the projects are funded unless everyone sitting at that table agrees. Um, and so, it's a one-hundred percent thing. It's, it's, it's saying all these projects really, um, are representing Oregon City as a whole and tourism as a whole. So, so we don't really leave until we all agree that it's all going to individual projects. So, that's, um, I think that's, oh, in addition to that, uh, there is a Clackamas Heritage Partners Meeting is, our next Clackamas Heritage Partners Meeting is on October twenty-fourth. In preparation for that, I have been meeting with, it seems almost daily, um, students from the Oregon City High School Construction Class who come and visit my classroom. Um, they're working on, uh, the, the Oregon City Construction Class got a grant through, um, Metro Enhancement, uh, to do a stage, um, a public stage, um, either at Clackamas Park or at the End of the Oregon Trail. In the recent months since that, uh, decision was made, I've heard no discussion of a stage being held at Clackamas Park, and so almost all the, all the discussion has been, um, putting a stage at the End of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. Um, we, I think that's a great idea, and, um, it is, it is, it allows us to utilize that space in a way that we probably haven't been able to in the past, and, um, so the students have been having a dialogue with myself, uh, but I also talk to them about, um, they're attending our meeting, a CHP meeting on, uh, the twenty-fourth to make a presentation to the CHP Board about their plans and get feedback from Clackamas Heritage Partners about the stage. And they've also set up meetings with Scott and Larry to start that process, too. So, um, the students are doing a really good job of, of going through that process, and, um, it's very preliminary right now. They went down to the site, measured off places to try to decide where the best place for the stage might be. They're gonna propose some, some drawings and some sketches of what might go there, and I'll keep you updated on that.
That's great.
And I'm sure Scott, Scott will as well.
Good job, Rocky.
I think that's it.
And what are you doing your spare time?
Yeah.
Well, you want, oh, well, this has been far too much good news, so I'm gonna bring everybody down, okay?
Oh.
Oh, thank you.
That's all right. I wanna come back and bring people up. I got some news.
Oh, okay, okay. You wanna do it first?
Nope.
Well, uh, September is National Preparedness Month, so I've been spending this month getting the world ready for the end of whatever's gonna happen here. And, uh, in, in part of that, I've been dealing, uh, working with the City of Lebanon in a program called Map Your Community, or Map Your Neighborhood. And, um, hopefully, we, when we get the, um, Neighborhood Watch Program going, we can incorporate this into it, and what it is, is, you know, really getting a plan for your entire neighborhood, whatever that could be, you know, three houses or three blocks, of where people go, where people meet, how you're going to, uh, account for your neighbors, just, you know, anything from like, if there's an earthquake, everybody putting their fire extinguisher out on the sidewalk, so if somebody needs it, they can grab it.
Right.
Um, so, just things like that, and then, and then encouraging people to buy emergency food.
There you go. That's a lot.
So, I, I deal with real fun things.
That's great. That's a good reminder for us. Absolutely.
What you said may be relevant to something I'm gonna say indirectly. Um, I think most people here know that, uh, City of Oregon City has, um, proposed several properties for listing in the National, uh, National Register. A State Advisory Board on, uh, Historic Preservation is meeting in La Grande on October eleventh to, uh, consider, uh, properties listed. Uh, most of the properties listed are Oregon City properties recommended by us, so I'll go through the list.
So, why are they meeting in La Grande if it's Oregon City?
Well, that's, but, but, but there are others, uh, but, but actually, the other two are important ones. But, anyway, uh, they, they wanna make sure the eastern counties get a little bit of benefit from their meetings. Um, the, uh, multiple properties, commercial and public properties in downtown and McLaughlin areas of Oregon City, the Oregon City Masonic Lodge, McLaughlin Promenade, Lachlan Promenade, my apologies, Oregon City Municipal Elevator, and the Oregon City Library, uh, are all being considered. The other two are the Reinhardt Building in Portland and the Salvation Army Industrial Home, and also Portland, uh, that's been, both of those are actually put, being put forward by, uh, property owners, uh, in, in the cases of Oregon City, with the, the city itself that are proposing those being put forward. I'm thinking of going down there. There's a period for, uh, uh, opening remarks, introductions. They said a public meeting, I don't know if they invite, uh, anybody to say anything. I don't know if anybody in staff was wanting to go to that meeting. Do you know?
Grand.
Yeah.
When is it?
It's October eleventh. It's a Friday.
Well, that ain't gonna happen for me.
No, I think so. So, uh, I, I think I'll, I'll go ahead and make the trip.
I would've liked to, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so, the, where the, had the negative of the is, of course, we have, we do have great concerns. We have specific areas in Oregon City that are regarded as major seismic, uh, areas, uh, and the downtown area is one of them.
Very, very much so.
So, uh, at some point, maybe we can actually get the, uh, Erma Tinger House as a proposed, uh, site for National Register.
It's actually-
Is it?
On it. The, yeah, it, it's already on the register. The only thing that we talked about doing is redoing, we, we may have to redo the register because the date of the house is wrong.
Oh, okay.
Um, we're investigating that, but we think the date of the house is closer to eighteen forty-three, not eighteen forty-five.
Okay. With that, any other comments for the good of the order?